All right, everyone, it's 6:00 PM. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I will start with standing and doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you could all please remain standing. Malcolm McPhail will give us the invocation.
Good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you to each of our city council members and for the attendance of everybody here tonight and how important it is as we kind of look at this election season that's in, we're in the throes of. I was reading in my, I have my quote book here tonight. Humility is an honest approach to the reality of our lives and acknowledges that we are not more important than other people. I think the greatest attribute of being a public servant and being a citizen in general is the ability to serve other people. And so I want to say thank you for serving this city and looking out for this city. And it's my prayer during this election season that God's will would be done on our city council as the elections take place and in our nation for that matter and in the many, many events in the world that our country impacts. And so really just want to say, want to say thank you and appreciate your service to each one of you and to all the citizens that are part of the process of government and the process of what takes place in our city. Let's bow our heads if we can real quick. Lord, thank you so much for the opportunity to be involved, the opportunity to be part of the process of government and what takes place in our nation. Lord, in our own city, we pray that your will would be done in the area of these elections coming up in the lives of each of those that are sitting on this podium, God, and that those that are sitting in our national podium, that your will and your purpose would prevail and that, Lord, you would do what's best for our country from a supernatural viewpoint for the United States and for our world. We pray for peace and we pray that your hand would continue to move as it wills. We trust you and we thank you and we ask those things in your name. Amen. Thank you. God bless you.
All right. Before we begin the official part of the meeting, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Councilmember Tovar and we also have a birthday coming up for Councilmember Marks, the month of October. Okay, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
All right. 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda and Roll Call.
Thank you. The revised agenda was posted on Friday, October 18th at 3:25 PM. Councilmember Brocko.
Here.
Councilmember Armandares.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
Mayor Blankley.
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, there are also none. Under ceremonial items, we have one proclamation for Arbor Day. And Pat Benson, yeah, I'll meet you at the podium.
I'm signed out. If I screw it up, you can save me. All right, everybody, I'm going to read this proclamation and then present it. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2024, as Arbor Day and encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future, of this and future generations. Right? This is Pat Benson, the Chair of our Parks and Rec Commission. We will be celebrating Arbor Day this Thursday at 11 o'clock at Rainbow Park. Right? And all who are invited who would like to attend, once again, it will be at Rainbow Park at 11 o'clock. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you very much.
Okay. That brings us to 3.1, which is three, Council Correspondence. There are two items under there. And then Presentations to the Council. First, we have two items here. The presentation by High Speed Rail will come second. First is a public comment for items not on the agenda. And let me get to how many we have there.
Eight right now.
Eight, okay. Then every, you go ahead and call them, Beth, in order, and it's a three-minute time period for everybody, and hopefully you'll be able to see the clock yourselves while you're speaking.
Our first speaker is Elaine Gooding to be followed by Mike Nagel and then Eli Azerman.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm going to start off with a Bible verse from King James, Isaiah 32:18, says, "And my people shall dwell in a peaceful habitation and in sheer dwellings and in quiet resting places." My name is Elaine Gooding. I reside at the Garlic Farm RV Park. I've been there for 15 years and I grew up here in Gilroy. You've seen me here before. I've come again to ask that we get, well, first of all, I want to thank Carol and Dion for coming out to visit us and see the situation out there with some of the lawless people that have lined up along the area of Balsa Road. And they contribute to the garbage and the mayhem and the stuff that goes on, but the part that bothers us the most is that the children get on and off of the bus there. There are no red curbs, there are no yellow curbs, there's no signs protecting, saying they can't stay there when we had actually, October 31st or 30th of last year, we had a RV that was parked over there explode because they had a meth lab going on. And in that corner where this is all going on, on the corner of Balsa, there that, there's over 30 kids that live there, that reside there, and here all this mayhem is going on behind them within 50 feet of their yard. That's not, you know, that's not right. We have asked, and again, I asked Carol and Dion to come out and see if we can get that red tagged or yellow tagged or some signs put up because we had them gone for maybe two weeks and they're back. They just pulled in last night and it just, we'd like a solution, you know, to it, and I know it's everywhere, but in that particular area, we can put up signs. I mean, if one morning I wake up and the curbs are all painted red, I don't know how it happened, but, you know, it could happen. So I pray that you guys will do the right thing in protecting our children out there because the Garlic Farm RV Park has 159 spaces, 10 to maybe 10 of them that are empty at this time and the rest are all tiny homes, but there's over 75 RVs, families, old people. We plan on retiring there. I've been there 15 years. I don't want to leave Gilroy. It's reasonable. We want to keep it reasonable. And also, we thank you for your time and, you know, we want to keep my kids safe out there. All right, have a blessed night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Nagel to be followed by Eli Azerman and James Pearson.
Good evening. My name is Mike Nagel. You have a basic presentation of the ideas in front of you. I will not go through the details except the key points. I'm referring to, if you can take, please, a look at the map on the page number three. I am the owner of 9250 Monterey Road. It's a 10-acre parcel which has been subdivided some 150 years ago. Unfortunately, it had undergone a faulty subdivision. The only ingress and egress is via the railroad lines. There were a few times of emergency where the Pacific Railroad maintenance people had to be called in an urgent way to deal with it. The California Supreme Court has recognized that errors have been done in the last 100, 150 years plus by the county and city and has recognized the fact that there needs to be an amendment. In fact, it has issued the concept of an easement by necessity, which it provides sometimes to basically alleviate that landlocked situation. You have the details and example of cases in the presentation I had left you. Since my property is adjacent to the upcoming project on 315 Los Anamos Avenue, I believe you council members and the Honorable Mayor have a golden opportunity to really address that situation which is, can sooner or later become a major liability on the city because of that faulty subdivision. And the requested action on the council and on the mayor is, once the project is approved, basically to require that the residents and future residents on that parcel which I own will have access through roads of the project AS 23-21, which provide exit to Los Anamos and thereby solves the issue of the landlocked situation. Again, let me emphasize that this is a liability which has been, which has to be addressed by the city and hopefully it's addressed before any hazardous situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eli Azerman to be followed by James Pearson and then Dennis Jamison.
Good evening, Council. My name is Eli Eisenman. I'm a VP with Ten South, the applicant on the project plan for 315 Los Anamos Avenue, same project Mr. Nagel just referred to. As the Mayor noted in an earlier meeting, it's a beautiful project. I have three brief points I want to make to set the record straight. First of all, contrary to some public statements, there is active litigation ongoing between ourselves and the City of Gilroy. You could look it up. Santa Clara County Superior Court, case number 24CV444165. Just last Thursday, we appeared before the judge for a case management conference, and in the short time this case has been going on, the city already missed its deadline to submit its administrative record to the court. It was due in August and we're expecting it now by the end of the month. Next, there's been an update to the builder's remedy law that applies to our project. Just last month, Governor Newsom signed into law a clarification regarding builder's remedy. The law retroactively clarifies that the city is flatly wrong about how the law works. City staff have argued in their incomplete letter that, quote, "When the housing element was adopted on May 1st, 2023, it contained everything required by state law and thus was in substantial compliance with state law." Consequently, staff has taken the position that the builder's remedy is not available to applicants since May 1st, 2023. Essentially, their position is that substantially compliant means close enough. Well, now the state has passed a new law, AB 1886, clarifying that staff's position was wrong then and it is even more clearly wrong now. Close enough is not good enough. The new law clarifies the meaning of substantial compliance, stating, "A city's housing element is not considered to be in substantial compliance until HCD or a court of competent jurisdiction determines the housing element to be in substantial compliance." HCD determined Gilroy's housing element to be in substantial compliance only on August 21, over a month and a half after we submitted our preliminary application. There is no longer any room for interpretation, just as the state has now repeatedly warned the city in two letters. Builder's remedy law clearly applies to this project. Finally, I want to reiterate, as I've done every time I've been up here, we have offered to settle this dispute with the city on terms that would be very favorable to the city, but the city appears to be set on fighting the law. We thank those council members who put aside their personal preferences and voted to follow the law, but unfortunately, a majority of you are determined to continue fighting this project despite the law. To be clear, this is a fight you cannot win, and when you lose, the city can face enormous fines, up to $25 million, in addition to all the money it paid its litigation lawyers and the money it will have to pay us for our lawyers. I hope the city decides to change its course.
Three minutes are up. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Pearson to be followed by Dennis Jamison and then Eric Matthews.
Honorable Mayor, Council Members, my name is James Pearson. This is not a complaint. I want to thank you. I'm one of the original members of the Library Bond Oversight Committee. We've tried for several years, when Jimmy was Finance Director, we tried to reconstitute the committee. Harjo has reached out and tried to reconstitute the committee now. I looked at the original first memo for the first meeting and it said that the committee should be composed, hopefully, of a library commission member, someone from the campaign for the proposition, and members of the public. We need a quorum, so I'm putting it out again. We need more members to volunteer for the Library Bond Oversight Committee. Thank you very much for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis Jamison to be followed by Eric Matthews and then Alicia.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I was last here when we participated in a proposal that essentially was an effort to have you agree that the law needed to be followed with regard to our elections. That was as simple as it was. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. On my way over here, I saw a truck bearing Mark Turner's name up the road and it said, "It matters who leads." So you are leaders here in Gilroy. I want to give you a story of a very famous woman. You might know of her. Her name is Mother Teresa. Basically, she was out trying to raise money for the children of the poor in India and knocked on one door and the guy opened the door and he spit in her face. She looked at him and said, "Thank you. That was for me." Now what are you going to give to the children? Reality is that we felt spit in our face on that day. There were issues that we want to address, and I have very simple points. I do want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to essentially follow procedure and then get that resolution put on the agenda, but all we were doing is asking for a fair and honest discussion. We weren't asking you to agree with anything in the resolution if you didn't. I appreciated what was said earlier today about humility. The reality is that we came before you in a humble way. We felt that you dismissed us with the back of your hand. This is real. These are citizens who basically came here humbly and offering themselves as essentially town criers, trying to help you understand that there's things that are going on in the state of California that a lot of people aren't aware of that we are. There were allegations made and accusations made, and they hurt individuals and those people who came before you. We're not coming here tonight as an organization. We're coming here as citizens because we felt spit in our face. The reality is that we would like to see an apology. This is what we're asking, and if you don't want to issue an apology through an agenda that you put on your agenda items in the future, then we ask you to prove the allegations, prove the accusations, because all of these things that were said by all these people that night were orchestrated, we know, because there was a Facebook presentation inviting many people to come here. And so it wasn't just random. The basic thing is, tonight, I just offered an opportunity for people to come and speak. I'm not here as a representative of any organization. I'm here because I'm a citizen. All of you are citizens as well, and you should be concerned about the elections. Put it on your agenda, either an apology.
Thank you.
Or.
Thank you.
Give us the proof, what we're saying.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Eric Matthews to be followed by Alicia and our final speaker, Judy Hess.
After I heard the resolution for the legally valid 2024 general election read here in Gilroy, there was a not-so-gentle gentleman who followed the readers out of the city council chambers. He was remarkably agitated in the parking lot at the people who read the resolution and getting in their faces. He accused them of spreading conspiracy theories, of having no proof. Whenever they tried to answer him, he would interrupt them and shout them down. In fact, he had many of the same objections that the council heard from the public on the day that they decided to vote against the resolution, except he was far more passionate about it than anyone else we'd heard that day. Unfortunately, he wasn't here on that day, and I can tell you why that was unfortunate. For anonymity's sake, I'll refer to our fellow agitated citizen as Mr. Thoughtful. Mr. Thoughtful went on and on for over 20 minutes while different proponents of the resolution patiently tried to answer him in their own way. Finally, after everyone gave up and went their way, two people stayed with him and one of them said, "You keep calling this a conspiracy theory, but this resolution is actually a list of methods to silence conspiracy theories," because conspiracy theories thrive when there's doubt and die when all doubt is removed. You keep saying there's no proof of election fraud, but even more obvious is that there's even less proof that there isn't election fraud. This resolution equips California with the proof of their election integrity. You accuse this resolution of being right wing, but in California, this resolution could only make sure that my vote and your vote is counted accurately and that ineligible or fraudulent ballots won't be able to override your vote or my vote, no matter which wing anybody votes for. And you said that just, that people just made up these numbers and don't have any proof. Well, they got the data for these numbers from the state of California, and if you really want, you could get that data too. Miracle of miracles, Mr. Thoughtful was quiet and listened as they calmly made those four points, and he was especially interested in number four. How did they get this data and what methods were used to come up with those numbers? At that point, they promised that if the council put this resolution on the agenda, they would be able to give him a presentation of how they got the data and arrived at the numbers quoted. At this, he became very interested. "All right, then," this is what he said, "all right, then, you come back and show us how you got those numbers." Sadly, we were, they were a bit naive about how this political process works, and the council broke that promise to Mr. Thoughtful. I was looking forward to seeing him that night, but now I'm glad he didn't show up because embarrassingly, not a single solitary scientific fact was presented that night. So can we change that?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia to be followed by our final speaker, Judy Hess.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Escudero Schoolcraft. I'm here as a concerned citizen regarding our elections. The last time we were here as the USA team, I felt that some of the council members were condescending and were dismissive about our concerns. A few of you said we promoted voter suppression and racial discrimination and even called us other unseemly names. How in the world does having fair elections have anything to do with voter suppression or race? I myself come from a patriotic Latino family. First language is Spanish, and as a child, I worked in the fields picking prunes, walnuts, and cutting apricots. And although we were in a lower working class, my family has always been able to vote. Discrimination? Here's what discrimination felt like to me. As a child learning to speak English in school, I had to learn to differentiate between the letters C-H and S-H. As an example, instead of saying chair, I would say share. The entire class laughed at me. It was embarrassing and I felt small. Another example was I had a friend whose parent was against having a Mexican-American friend. She wouldn't even shake my hand to touch me. Now that was discriminatory. The dismissive way some of you spoke to us at that meeting were the same feelings I had back then with those experiences. Fair and legal elections have nothing to do with race. So again, I ask, how is this voter suppression and discrimination? What did we say in our presentation that had you believe that? I just want my vote to count.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Judy Hess.
So I'm actually here to talk about two things. One is what my friends have been talking about, which was when we came earlier with the proclamation for voting. And there were a couple people in Gilroy that came up and talked about working the polls. And I don't know if I mentioned, but I too worked. I didn't work at the polls in Gilroy. What I did was I went right to the ROV to see how honest and fair those elections really are. And at the ROV, just to let everybody know what happens when you do vote, say for an example, you vote for part of the group but not the other group. Your vote gets, your vote doesn't, it goes into a machine and someone decides, did that really person really want to vote for that or not? So it's not really your vote, but your vote goes into a machine. It's adjudicated. And then if, for an example, when you're filling out your ballot and you accidentally spill coffee on your ballot, now your vote doesn't get counted. Your vote goes into duplication and somebody is sitting there duplicating it. So honestly, I believe that people, when they are at the polling place and they're looking at our votes and helping us do it, honestly, I believe everybody is honest. But once it goes into that machine, how do we know? The other thing I wanted to mention is earlier today, and honestly, I'm not the best at looking these things up, but it was the registrar of voters, what I found in multiple times in Gilroy, there was a vacant lot that had four votes. There was a, I don't know, honestly, I don't really know about P.O. boxes, but there were over 100 people that in Gilroy, I'm only talking Gilroy here, over 100 people at 777 First Street and Monterey Street, altogether, it was more than that, it was more than 150 people that, and I don't know if we can put a P.O. box into, for our residency. So there are discrepancies right here in Gilroy. I have three pages full of addresses. But the other thing, and I have 28 seconds left, is most of you already know, but I just wanted everybody to know that there's a pancake breakfast and it's Steve Ashford Memorial, because Steve Ashford used to have pancake breakfasts in front of his place for the candidates. And so I just want to make sure everybody's invited to go on Saturday morning to the Miller Red Barn for the pancake breakfast. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No.
Okay. Thank you all. Moving on to 4.2, which is a presentation by High Speed Rail. And Erin, you're going to, yeah, do the introduction?
Yes. Let's see if I can make sure that's on. I don't know. Okay, yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, and members of the public. My name is Erin Freitas, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department, and we are here today to give an update on the High Speed Rail project. The city has been working together in partnership with the High Speed Rail Authority and VTA on the future planning of the High Speed Rail, which will have a stop here in downtown Gilroy. I am joined here tonight with the High Speed Rail Authority, VTA, and the consultant team to share with you all where we are now. And I will now pass it on to the High Speed Rail Authority.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Boris Lipkin. I'm the Northern California Regional Director with the High Speed Rail Authority. I appreciate having a chance to be with you tonight. I also have Meg Sidroth, who's our Director of Planning and Sustainability. She'll do the bulk of the presentation after I do some upfront stuff, as well as Aiko from VTA, who will also be presenting with us on some of our joint efforts here in the city. So it's been a few years since I've been before you, and so part of what I want to do today is just give an update on where we stand with High Speed Rail. do today is just give an update on where we stand with High Speed Rail across the state, what are our current priorities, what have we done in Northern California, and what's next for us. And I'll do a little bit of a reminder of some of the alignments and decisions that have come before that I know, I'm sure you guys get asked about, and we certainly get asked about, sort of what's the routing, where is it going to go, and what is it going to look like here? So just to give kind of the biggest picture, starting point, the voters of California approved Boas Proposition 1A back in 2008, and it laid out the map that's on the right there, which has Phase 1 of the system running from San Francisco down to San Jose, Gilroy, and then turning east, coming down through the Central Valley, and then ultimately landing in Los Angeles and Anaheim in Southern California, and then Phase 2 being the extensions up to Sacramento and down to San Diego. So that was the entire statewide system. The voters also specified a number of features of the system, like travel times, so having the design be able to have a train between San Francisco and Los Angeles in two hours and 40 minutes. Also, that the train would run on electric power. And so that's what we've been working on implementing across the state. So just in terms of, I won't make the big spiel on all the reasons why High Speed Rail's great, I'm happy to get into all that, but I think this slide is sort of the easiest way to understand it. When we look internationally at High Speed Rail systems, where they fit best is in the distances between about 100 and 500 miles, because that's where you're much faster than cars, and you can compete with airplanes for some of those longer trips. And that's the distance between most of our major cities around California, and on the train, you get to line them all up and stop in all of them and connect all the places together. And so when we talk about some of the travel time benefits, we're talking about making Fresno, you know, an hour from San Jose essentially. And that starts to really change how we get around, how places are connected, how people can travel, and what that means from how, you know, where do people work and live, and what decisions they might make. So here's sort of taking that Phase 1, which the voters told us to start with, and here's the current status of things. So we have 119 miles under construction. That's the yellow and green part in the Central Valley. The green part is substantially complete. That was our first construction package that finished last year. And then we're working on the dashed lines are the extensions up to Merced and down to Bakersfield. Those are the next kind of 50 miles that we plan to construct and then begin service on that Central Valley stretch. As we've been doing that, we've also continued to advance our work across the state, and so we now have environmental clearance all the way from San Francisco through all the way down to downtown Los Angeles. So the only part that's not environmentally cleared yet is that little stretch, the pink line on the bottom between Los Angeles and Anaheim. This has been a massive effort over the last few years in Northern California. This is work that we completed in 2022. Along the way, we've made a number of different investments in joint corridors, and so in Northern California, we helped to electrify the Caltrain corridor between San Francisco and San Jose. That went into revenue service last month, and then we're also making investments in Union Station down in Los Angeles. The last bit of kind of big-picture news that I'll share, for those who maybe aren't following us on a day-to-day basis, but it's something that we worked on with the city. Last year, we had a big federal grant application that we put in. We actually put in two applications, one for construction work in the Central Valley and one to advance our work into Northern and Southern California. The city helped support our second application. We got the first one, but not the second one, so that's work that's still in front of us, and so there's the next round of those grants that I'll be talking about a little bit more, that we'll be coming back to you for some additional support to continue to advance our work in getting to the Bay Area. So then, turning to just a quick snapshot of routing, and again, for those who've been around, I know Katsumo Bracco is here, has been here for several of my presentations, but just a reminder of sort of the alignment and the route in Northern California. So if we kind of start off in the Central Valley part, on the bottom right of the map, that's called the Central Valley Y. That's where the trains either go up north towards Merced and Sacramento, or down south towards Fresno and Los Angeles. We start with our dedicated alignment, so this is High Speed Rail in its own guideway by itself, operating up kind of north past Los Banos. And then as we get into Pacheco Pass, we're close to 152, but we go north of the San Luis Reservoir and then enter our longest tunnel stretch, which is a 13 and 1/2 mile tunnel through the pass. That's the dashed line that you see there. We then continue and have a second shorter tunnel, about a mile and a half. This is over by Casa de Fruta. From there, we come into town, and then we get onto a shared corridor. So this is the kind of thicker blue line is the upgrades that we'll be making in the Union Pacific Corridor to extend the electrification project and the blended system, so us and Caltrain sharing the infrastructure together and running in a shared corridor between San Jose and Gilroy, similar to what's been done for the electrification project north of there. As we get past San Jose, we're using the existing tracks and infrastructure, that's why we helped invest in the electrification project. We have a maintenance facility in Brisbane, and then we end up in San Francisco at the Salesforce Transit Center. That's about 159 miles, and that's the work that my team in Northern California is tasked with. So just again, a little bit of a rewind, and folks might be familiar with this, but we went through an extensive process of looking at alignment options, especially in Gilroy, we had the most options of things that we were looking at at the time. And so we went through a number of years of looking at alternatives, evaluations. We came here with a recommendation on a preferred alternative back in 2019. The city supported our recommendation that went into a draft environmental document in 2020, and then was ultimately part of our final environmental document, which was approved in 2022 for the San Jose to Merced stretch. So again, just to remind folks, what we were looking at at the time was these four alternatives. So three of them, Alternatives 1, 2, and 4, used the downtown Gilroy Station, the existing station where Caltrain currently is, with different configurations of how we get there. So Alternative 1 was on a viaduct, parallel to the existing rail corridor. Alternative 2 was on an embankment, but also next to the rail corridor, creating a new rail corridor, parallel to the existing one. Alternative 4 was our blended at-grade alternative, so this is the one that uses the existing rail corridor, just as I just described. I'll preview what I'm about to say, that's the one we ended up with. And then Alternative 3 had a station out by the outlets. And so after looking at all four of those options, we ended up recommending and ultimately selecting Alternative 4, which is the one using the existing rail corridor. So just to kind of reiterate, you know, the reasons behind it, you know, we certainly saw value, and I think the city did at the time, I won't speak for your colleagues or current members, but in the downtown station, just from a kind of integration with land use planning and the thinking that we can do around what that station can mean for the city and development opportunities, electrifying the corridor meant that we could also have increased Caltrain service down to South County. That's part of their long-range service vision, but you need the infrastructure there to accommodate it. And of course, by using the existing rail corridor, we were able to reduce impacts by not having to carve out a whole new rail corridor in this stretch of the alignment. All of that resulted in fewer impacts, less displacements, and ultimately, less impact to the community. This is a graphic of the plans for the station. Again, this is very, very preliminary engineering, so this is, you know, more massing than really kind of detailed architectural work. But what we're talking about at the station is having the different platforms, the one on the bottom is the existing Caltrain platform that exists today. We would move the Caltrain yard that's there today further to the south, and then put two high-speed rail platforms in the middle, a Caltrain platform on the other side, and then the pink tracks would be the freight tracks and the track for the Salinas extension from Tamsi coming into Gilroy. And then, just a final thought from me, and I'll turn it to Meg on some of the planning work that we're doing with the city, that's sort of the topic for today's conversation, is I'd be remiss if I didn't advertise that we have an open house tomorrow. We're coming back out to the community. This is sort of our first one of these since COVID times, so coming back to give some updates and talk about the project, answer questions. So that's tomorrow at South Valley Middle School. We'll also be out at the La Frontera Festival, and then we'll continue our outreach efforts through the stationary visioning study process. And then that grant opportunity that I mentioned, we're deciding right now what we're going to apply for. If there's something relevant, of course, we'll be back in touch for a request for some support from the city for that. Those are decisions coming in the next few weeks. The application is due in the beginning of December, so fairly imminent. With that, I'm going to turn it to Meg, and then I'll be available for questions after the presentation.
Thank you, Boris.
Good evening. I'm Meg Cederoth. I'm the Director of Planning and Sustainability at the Authority, and it's really my pleasure and honor to get to spend time with Mayor and City Council members and members of the public this evening. I know both Boris, myself, and folks from our team are happy to take questions and answer any questions you have. I love that Boris teed up that preliminary work that happened in the environmental process. That's about discovering a good location for the station, working through kind of those larger elements. And then what my team have done at these four places you see here, which are the stations that are the High Speed Rail stations on the first operating segment, between the city of Merced in the north and the city of Bakersfield in the south, via the city of Fresno and the interregional stop in Kingsleyary, is to take that initial massing work and the idea of how big the station needs to be, and take on board all of the planning work that's gone on in each of these locations, and start to layer in much more precise design activities, so that this concept of a large high-speed rail station starts to become much more clear-cut. You start to understand, you know, what is an appropriate doorway, where does it need to go, what is that main portal and entrance? And all of this design work is very much grounded in the philosophy that the Authority has, which is that this station is a gateway to very special and unique places across the state of California. Gilroy is a place like no other in the state, and so we want the station to serve as a gateway for people in Gilroy, of course, to the rest of the state, but very importantly, for people coming to Gilroy. So part of that work is nested in some of the vision study that I'll go into a little more detail on in a moment. But here you see a number of early concepts for the station. One thing I'll draw your attention to is that idea of vertical circulation. We do need to bring people up and into a station and then down onto platforms, or in the case of Kingsleyary and Bakersfield, we need to bring people underneath a viaduct and then up to platforms. Gilroy is very much like the same configuration we have in the city of Fresno and the city of Palmdale, where you have an at-grade station. So we'll always be wanting to have a two-sided station, so that the front door faces both sides of the tracks, and we want the station itself to serve as a bridge within the community. And that is such a beautiful statement to make. Becoming a bridge is very much about working with the city, working with city staff, and working with the community to really make that a real tangible design. One of the core other grounding philosophies of the station, you know, that it be a bridge in the community, that it be a gateway for folks to the city of Gilroy, is recognizing that the station area itself is a very unique opportunity for concentrating growth around that very significant transportation investment. That reduces pressure on other natural and working lands, of which I know the area in Gilroy has many, but it also starts to invite new uses and attract different types of activities around the station itself, and gives people an opportunity to do more within that 15-minute walk shed than they might be able to do today. All of that, though, comes down to making sure that the station itself fits well into the surrounding fabric, which means not just how does this building and this large transportation infrastructure investment work, but also those core pieces of transit and active transportation all work together so that your access to the station is safe and comfortable across all different types of modes. So that's part of the hard work that we're undergoing, engaged in right now with city staff. We're also looking at and exploring the opportunity for the station itself to catalyze infill or to catalyze new types of development for the surrounding areas. And then, as I said, make sure it is a place people want to come and spend time. It can be a destination in and of itself, as well as being very much a way for people to get into the city of Gilroy. All of this stems with the idea of co-creating that station area activity with the community. These are a few examples from work we did with the city of Fresno. I know a number of city staff came and visited our construction sites in Fresno, got to meet with some of the local economic development and other city staff in Fresno. And one of what we have seen as we've been engaged in delivering this project over time is that that co-creation does mean, you know, sitting down at the table, understanding how different pieces of the High Speed Rail station play a role in terms of what they're adjacent to. No one knows a city and a place better than the people who are in it. So while we have, you know, this pretty important transportation investment we need to bring to the table, we also want to understand how we can use things like public plazas and the locations of bike storage and bike racks, and the location of bus bays, and the locations of public art, like murals, can play a role in making the entire area being active and making sure that the station is well-integrated into the surrounding community. So here you see that plan view was an early concept of a plaza in front of and on the station complex for the Fresno station. And this was the result of several different meetings and engagement with the community to understand that this very specific corner was actually very useful to have new grant dollars flow to even before we begin construction of the station. This is one of the first elements of the station that's going to be built out, and the purpose is to be bringing new activity to this place as soon as possible. So with that, I want to pivot to the vision study, because I know it can sound, when you talk about visioning, it starts to get a little amorphous, as opposed to the process of design, which is very much about drawing a building and a specific elements in a place. But the success of any given design is understanding the vision it is meant to fulfill. And what the vision activities that the team has been engaged in to date is working with city staff and in focus groups, hearing from the local community, to understand what is the place that Gilroy wants to have around the High Speed Rail station? What is of most value to Gilroy to be here? This is a very good opportunity for staff and the community to explore what the future conditions they would like to see in this place. Sometimes I know we're very driven to requirements-based planning, like your housing element or like your transportation element. A vision study is very much an activity for you to explore what you want to see at the station itself. The results of this work will be a concept plan that represents this long-term vision. It will be very graphic-based. It will be underlying, that will be some analytics as well, relative to market conditions, as well as the transportation need. And what it will do ultimately is illustrate the overall intent of what we want to do with this space collaboratively with the city. And almost, I know it sounds a little bit self-serving, but one of the best ways we have seen to attract grant dollars to cities even far in advance of High Speed Rail service is working collaboratively with the cities, so that, you know, our major funders, be they the state or the region or the federal government, understand that those grant dollars are going to a given purpose that is additive and kind of works toward the whole. We've been really appreciative, we've saw the receipt of raised grant funding for that plaza, I showed you earlier, in the city of Fresno, which means we, you know, while the station itself will be delivered in sort of the late 2029, 2030 timeframe, that plaza will be delivered a few years in advance of that. So it means we're building activity early, even before the station comes online. So that collaborative work is meant to bring grant dollars to the table that allow us to get going sooner on some of these really catalytic projects that help Gilroy with whatever the needs and conditions you see for the city. This is a bit of the schedule. It's a pretty robust, quick set of activities that's going to lead to a set of draft recommendations in the spring. We've had already one focused listening session, as well as a few other community outreach and engagement activities on the recommendation of staff. We'll also be having a few more focus group meetings before we wrap up that initial draft recommendation. be having a few more focus group meetings before we wrap up that initial draft recommendations in the spring. Again, the draft plan is going to be very graphically based. It's going to show you a set of visions and ideas, but it will also look at the underlying analytics as well. So the community feedback to date, we've heard a lot about walkable streets and sidewalks, making sure that that downtown is well-shaded and very comfortable. Actually, shade, I have to break it to you, is a theme across all of California, where we do work with the high-speed rail system, making sure it's very comfortable for people to walk, and again, making sure it's very comfortable for them to access things like retail, a variety of shops and restaurants, and comfortable to sit outside and have outdoor seating. We also see and have heard a lot about expanding the food options and food trucks and farmers' markets in the area, as well as creating those open spaces, that public realm and areas for recreation and activity, which very much make up good development. And then finally, what we've heard is while the station itself is a gateway, there are other gateway opportunities that this vision plan can really put some flesh and some ideas around. In a much more sort of graphically fun way, Boris' slide illustrated the upcoming outreach. Tomorrow night, of course, is the open house at the South Valley Middle School, and then on the 2nd of November, that Saturday, will be at La Oferda. We're also going to be engaged in a survey via the web, and then some additional community meetings that will be both hybrid, virtual, and in-person, as well as having bilingual and translation activities available. So I am very pleased to hand over the presentation to my colleague, Aiko from VTA, to talk a little bit about their access study.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aiko Quaidgo. I'm a senior planner with the VTA, and I want to talk to you about a separate but related study and the reason why we are partnering on this presentation today. So in addition to collaborating on the visioning study that you just heard about, VTA is also working in partnership with city and high-speed rail staff on the Gilroy Station Access Study. So this is a study that VTA is leading to look at potential improvements to enhance safe and convenient access to the station. So really looking at opportunities to make it easier to walk by connecting transit to the station from the surrounding neighborhoods. So some of the recommendations that could be identified through this planning study may include improving bicycle connectivity and pedestrian access within the station area, better wayfinding, rider amenities at the stops in the station, and looking at potentially reducing conflicts between motorists and those who are walking and biking. And all of this is really to help support our ability to partner with the city and agency partners like High Speed Rail to look for future grant funding to advance some of these recommendations for implementation. And really, one of the key benefits of us all working together, since we are all looking at potentially at the same area, is that we're really leveraging each other's work. So these two planning studies are concurrent. They're related, but we are really looking to make sure that the findings around mobility and circulation are aligned, and that when we go out, we are also really partnering on our outreach events, and we're speaking kind of with one voice to the community and hearing from everybody about their priorities around station access and just generally the station area. As a general timeline of the access planning effort, this is a study that kicked off this summer in July. As you can see, it's a fairly quick study. It's primarily divided in two phases. We just finished phase one of our work, which is really looking to document the current access conditions and transportation gaps in the station area. We did a number of outreach events with the community to really hear from them, what are your current access barriers and challenges today? And we are now shifting into phase two of our work, which is really just putting together the draft access recommendations. And we plan to go back out to the community to get their input on that next month, and then wrapping up the study in early next year around February. And again, this is really just the beginning of this partnership between VTA, High Speed Rail, and the city. One of the ways that we're doing, one of the ways we're formalizing this working relationship between our agencies is really putting together a memorandum of understanding. So formalizing our commitment to work together, not only in these two planning efforts, but future station area planning efforts. One of those early things that we are doing is we submitted, we worked together on an FTA grant submittal, which is really looking, going after grant funding to plan for the next stage of this visioning study. So we're doing this visioning work now, and then hopefully will lead us to early next year, if we're awarded, to do a more comprehensive station area plan. So really building off of what we heard from the community as their key priorities and doing some more detailed analysis and planning around that. And that's the end of our presentation. We're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, all three of you. Very, very well done. All right, council members, does anyone have any questions while we have all of this wealth of knowledge here with us? No, looking on both sides? Okay.
I think I do.
You have a question?
Okay.
Okay.
So for the community meeting, the community outreach that you're doing, including tomorrow, and you mentioned a couple of future meetings, are there questions specific to how to incorporate local culture, local history, local art, and of course, the climate and the local weather into the designing of the station? You hinted at it, but do the questions or the way you engage community, you know, do deeper dives on that?
Sure.
We'll go.
So, okay, so starting tomorrow, with tomorrow as an open house, you know, for that one specifically, our main objective, the last one of the time that we did this was in 2019, then kind of COVID hit, everything went virtual, and so, you know, we kind of thought it was the right time to come back and basically be able to have all of our plans out, give people updated information on the project. So that's the focus for tomorrow, is more to kind of catch everybody up on what's been happening and really be there with a slew of resources available to folks. Now, that's sort of the specific point of the open house, but I want Meg to talk about the community art and the rest of how we think about the stations.
Absolutely. So one of the, one of the activities when we are engaged with pop-up tables and other community-type events is giving people the opportunity to look at different pieces of imagery and sort of do that classic planning activity where you put a sticker and what you're interested in. And what we've also found helpful is to, you know, generally explore ideas of where you would want to see local art and culture integrated into the design, but then also provide some examples. So looking at things like pavers and paving materials or gateways or pieces of public art, bike racks, public furniture, and just understanding, you know, where is, where is the community interested in seeing that kind of local culture expressed in the design as well? So it is meant to be pretty explorative and give people the opportunity to really voice what they see is interesting and appealing on the station site.
And how are there interests incorporated? Like, who makes the decision and when and where?
Right. Well, at this stage, because we are in this kind of visioning level of activity, the intent is to give people an open opportunity to express what they're interested in, to articulate what they think the vision is, and the planning study itself captures that feedback. When it comes to, that would be one piece of information that we would provide to a design or a designer to execute. So, you know, in this instance, we'll be using some of the feedback we get from the vision study to inform a future station area master plan, which is a little bit about the land use as well as the public plazas. But then we would also maintain the results of the vision study and all of the feedback we'd heard and all of those notes and information from those community meetings, and provide that to a future designer of the station. So they would take onboard what we heard from this early stage of community engagement around the station itself and incorporate that into their design.
Okay. Yeah, just from the design pictures, I mean, the station is, has to be massive, right? It's huge.
It's a sizable piece of infrastructure, yes.
And so I think about the landscaping, like how to mitigate, like this looks like a giant spaceship landed on our downtown, right? Like, how do we ease that in? How do we make it pretty? How do we make it part of Gilroy's character to reflect Gilroy as a city, right, versus, and its history and culture?
Right, right. And I love that question, because that speaks to, you know, there's a component of the station design that is very much functional, right? The canopy that you see that is the kind of larger element, that's intended to shade the passengers on the platform, because we want you to be, have a wonderful experience as a passenger on high-speed rail, which means having a very comfortable access to the train itself. But while that is something we like to repeat across, across the alignment, so it's a very clear identifier, what we've been doing in Merced and in Bakersfield and in Fresno and Kings Tulare is using that opportunity, as you articulated, of the landscaping and the street furniture and that kind of arrival and sort of front door design to reflect the local character, so that it is blended well into the surrounding community.
Based on community input?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No.
I know from what I've toured personally, lots of murals are used around all of the station areas, and it's a, thank you for being here and updating us on where this stands, and I hope that much or many in the community will take advantage of tomorrow night to hear for themselves where it stands too. All right?
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Armand Eras.
Yes. Let's see, no meetings, but I did get to attend the League of Cities Conference last week, and I think Councilmember Tovar will report back on the voter, the official part. But I did get to attend some really innovative, or some presentations about some really innovative ideas when it comes to the unhoused residents of our community and how to collaborate on homelessness, and so I'll be happy to share some of those ideas as the opportunities present themselves. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Two weeks ago, the Downtown Committee met, and we will be bringing forth two recommendations to council for their consideration. One recommendation, the committee voted on no more future parklets in downtown Gilroy between First and 10th and Eagleberry and Railroad. And then the second recommendation is going to be for the two existing parklets, we would like to adopt a plan similar to Campbell's. And so hopefully, we will be on the agenda, you know, right after the first of the year. And then the committee is on hiatus until January. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors approved the allocation of $6 million to expand decarbonization programs and initiatives, the execution of a long-term solar and storage project, and the allocation of $100,000 for the expanded education fund. The board also adopted a resolution to support the Climate Bond and discuss the 2023-2024 greenhouse gas emissions inventory. For the home rebates, this rebate program will, has helped over 1,300 homes go partially or fully electric. The $3 million funding supports continued program growth to serve more customers with rebates, with the potential to upgrade 300 additional water heaters and 300 additional space, space heating and cooling systems. Program market funding, launching, deploying, and actively marketing programs ensure that SPC customers are aware of the offers and services available to them. The $500,000 allocation will support initiatives, campaigns, effective marketing strategies, and comprehensive plannings across, across all of the service customers that can participate in. The SPC Board approved a new long-term power purchase agreement with VCI Energy Glossy Garlic Solar and Battery Storage. The 50-megawatt power, power storage facility will be located, will be the first utility-scale renewable source contracted by SPC, and it's actually going to be in unincorporated Santa Clara County right off Pacheco Pass. The new project will help SPC meet its, meet its clean energy targets, California's renewable portfolio standard, and resource adequacy requirements. The SPC Board approved a resolution to support Prop IV, the Climate Bond, on November 5, 2024 statewide ballot. If passed by voters, Proposition IV will authorize the state to issue a $10 billion bond repaid over 40 years to fund several climate-related initiatives, including water, fire, wildfire, and energy. This resolution aligns with SPC's strategic plan of advancing policies to support SPC's mission to reduce dependencies on fossil fuels. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
No report.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had an opportunity to attend the League of Cities. I joined Councilmember Armand Eras in the unhoused workshop, which I found to be very informative, and I thank you for mentioning that. One of the other ones I was able to attend was really listening to many of the cities within California who are dealing with the fentanyl issue and what a lot of them are doing strategically-wise in helping their community, and got some great ideas. And many cities are writing grants to get assistance from the DEA and other agencies out there. So I connected with the presenter and hopefully get some ideas that we can bring to Gilroy. I also wanted to update everybody on the initial meeting of the Gilroy Gardens Committee that the council recently established. Councilmember Bracco, Klein, and myself, along with city staff, met with members of the Gilroy Gardens Board last, last week, I believe. And during this meeting, we shared many of the important topics and outlined our goals as a city council with them. So thank you to Victoria and Jimmy for all their hard work and bringing us together. And again, just the beginning of us working together with Gilroy Gardens in hopes of seeing Gilroy Garden grow and succeed. So I found that to be very productive.
Okay. I, too, attended the League conference. I was there all, all of the three days, and the best part about going is just, it's so reassuring to find out just how much we are all dealing with so many of the same issues. And it is very nice to have a league like this that CalCities puts together for the benefit of all of us to learn from each other. As was mentioned earlier by someone, there is a pancake breakfast. It's at the Miller Barn, Miller Red Barn, this Saturday morning, for those who would like to attend. And there's also the San Martin Fly-In this Saturday, too, starting. Okay. Consent calendar? Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? I'll start with that.
No public comment.
Okay. Does anybody wish to remove something from consent or bring forth a motion?
A motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Armand Eras and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to approve the consent calendar. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Armand Eras.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Mayor Blankley. Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, item seven is bids and proposals. We have none. Eight is public hearings, none. Nine is unfinished business, none. Ten, introduction of new business. 10.1, report on awarded grants and adoption of a resolution amending the, the adopted budget to reflect the grant awards. Bryce, you'll be giving us this presentation?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and council. So the city has become more successful in applying for grants, and this has been made evident by the recent award of a string of grants across multiple departments of the city. So the report is to accomplish two things. One is to provide a report on these grant awards to council, but also to amend the budget to recognize the revenue and appropriate the funds so we can start using the money to perform the functions to which we were awarded the grants. So on the screen is a list of the grants. A very detailed description is contained inside the written staff report, but I'll go through these very briefly. So the, starting at the top, the $13,800 was an award to our police department for a bulletproof vest grant. And so they'll be using that to replace some bulletproof vests for officers to increase their performance and functionality, keeping our officers safe. The next $125,000 is for the Office of Traffic Safety Grant, also to our police department. It's going to be used for DUI checkpoints and saturation patrols, overtime funding, but also attempt to reduce injury and fatal collisions by conducting 13 special traffic enforcement operations and one distracted driver operation. Acceptance of that grant requires the police department to provide training in DUI enforcement to police officers and traffic safety training to members of the community without reimbursement. So Gilroy PD hosts a DUI training class taught by the California Highway Patrol, so Gilroy police officers can attend without additional costs. And the traffic unit also provides bicycle pedestrian classes for schoolchildren during their normal workdays. Next is the fire department. We have the Emergency Medical Services Grant, $40,800, and that is being used to purchase a replacement to our manually-operated gurney with a battery-powered hydraulic system that raises and lowers the patient for the paramedics. Power gurneys dramatically reduce strenuous lifting and the associated injuries that kind of come with it for the back, frequent experience in paramedics, and so is hoped to reduce any injuries and potential workers' compensation claims for the city. The screen also is funding a pre-hospital trauma life support response training. This grant also is funding a pre-hospital trauma life support response training for department's first responders as well, which aims to improve the quality of trauma care and decrease mortality in the patients with whom the department responds. Oops, sorry. The next two are with the Inside Administration Department, the Office of Emergency Management. The first one is the Listos Grant. That is for our, it's a community emergency response team. It's a support grant. And so it's going to provide funding for radios, trailers, for equipment, transportation and training, volunteer management platform and a badge, badge printer to recognize those certain volunteers officially. The second one, $21,200, is an award from FEMA. It's going to provide some EOC equipment to help consolidate information for those that are serving inside the EOC during a disaster, as well as funding for training and conferences for emergency personnel. And last but not least, $190,000 from Caltrans for Put Works Department for the Safe Streets for All Grant. This is going to be used for the development of a comprehensive roadway safety action plan. This is an increasing requirement in other grants from the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans, and so this helps us stay competitive while at the same time analyzing our traffic patterns to identify opportunities to improve safety. This last one, there'll be another agreement coming to council in the future. We're working on the final terms of that with Caltrans for that program. In addition to that list and the staff report, there are also two other grants that have been reported to council previously, but are worth noting for the public. $250,000 from the Santa Clara County District Attorney's Office for the South County Task Force and $335,000 from Caltrans for our Climate Action Plan, Transportation Demand Management and Vehicle Miles Traveled Policy Process. All combined since July 2024, that's about just over a million dollars in grant awards for the city. So fiscal impact from this, this resolution, in order to use the funds, we must amend the appropriations in these amounts, a total of $415,800. $277,000 is the general fund, and the remaining are split across dedicated police grant funds. So the recommendation tonight is for council to adopt the resolution amending the budget. That completes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bryce. All right, council members, any questions? I don't see anyone on the board. Any public comment?
No.
Okay, no public comment. Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Marks to adopt the resolution, to adopt the, amending the budget, right? This is to, right, to amend the budget and reflect the grant awards. Okay. Councilmember Barco.
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Mayor Blankley. Yes, passes unanimously. All right, item 11, future council-initiated items, we have none. So that brings us to 12, which is city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a real quick report that's on agenda. I too attended the League of California Cities along with councilmembers Tovar, Armandares and the mayor. We also had three other staff members, our community development director, also our finance director and our police chief attended as well. And I echo what the other council member says, it's really a good couple of days just to get ideas. And I attended most of the unhoused sessions, which was a very large topic, and learned a lot, but learned about how, you know, some counties have done a good job of at least trying to do better and their challenges and such. So looking forward to as the next few months go by, that we continue to have these conversations about what we can do, because as most of you are very aware of, we're doing, I think, the best we can, but that doesn't mean we can't do better. And right now, we're in a daily struggle to help these folks, folks get the assistance they need and also take care of our community all around. So good opportunity to get some ideas, but a lot of hard work ahead of us. The agenda item I have for you is the Santa Teresa Fire Station update, and I actually am going to keep this as a standing item going forward because I want to keep you up to date of everything that's going, because this project is going to go fast. This will not be a project while you're saying, why is this taking so long? Because we have two things that we don't normally have in projects. We have land and we have money and we have a design. So since the approval of the fourth operating memorandum just a couple of weeks ago, we've had some good progress. The entire document has been executed by both sides, and so the paperwork's done there. We have established an escrow, escrow account, and right now, the Glen Loma Corporation is appraising the property and will have it placed into escrow as, as well as the funds that were supposed to accompany that as the first two steps. So for council, which will be coming up, and I don't have a date for you yet, but I'll send it to you as soon as I do, you will need to accept the land. Once you accept the land, we are on our way. We will re-engage the previous architect, we will engage the community and engage our staff into seeing what design modifications we need to make, but make, but once we do that, then we're going to be pretty close to being ready to go out and bid and get that thing underway. So like I said, this will be a standard report on the agenda for the future.
That deserves another round of applause, you guys. We got it. Yes. Okay. All right, city attorneys' reports.
I have no report.
Okay, we have no closed session, so that's it. We are adjourned at 7:14. All right.